This is the City of Flint's City Council Meeting. Presented by Spectacle Productions, Determined to Make a Difference. And the City of Flint, the City Council. The Flint Apple Club, a great place to meet friends you'll never have to see again. Underwritten in part by Local 370 Flint, Michigan. United Association of Union of Plumbers, Pipe Fitters, Welders, and Service Tax. Pipe Fitters Union has entry-level conveyors available and available at eight one zero seven two zero five two four three. For more information on how to get involved with public access and these broadcasts, you can reach out to eight one zero two three nine two nine oh one. The City of Flint, City Council Meeting, up next.
Present. Okay, we have some resolutions, Councilman Mays.
Chair, Madam Chair, I would move Resolution one eight zero zero three two to Council.
It's been moved as a committee discussion. I do have some. Hello, you were going to provide this information to me?
Yes.
With information, is that already in here?
Ish, it might not be, I know I can't do it verbally. I need to break down of vehicles that you want to buy and the cost, and the cost of those. But I think, you know, it's important, it's important that we, this, one thing I want to make sure the council understands, that these vehicles were identified from purchase, most of these vehicles were identified from purchase last year, but for different reasons, they weren't procured last year. So that money flowed into fund balance, I think something that's very important, Councilwoman Galloway and I talked about this morning on the phone, it's very important that people understand that the joint fund, that the fleet fund specifically set aside will be, so this transaction did not touch joint fund dollars. So I want to make sure that that's perfectly clear. But what happened is, there are a number of vehicles that were scheduled to be purchased last year, who we did not, they were budgeted to purchase last year, those funds flowed into, into the, jumped into, I'm sorry, not the joint fund, but the fund balance of six sixty-three. And so now that inflated above budget, the budget that you all got, that's going to be the fund balance because they expected to purchase those vehicles. So now we're putting that excess money out because that's the way we're funding vehicles whenever it's as related to purchase. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood those principles. So what he's looking to buy is four snowplow trucks, which he was going to purchase those for seventy-nine thousand dollars originally, but now he's going to lease them for a hundred fifty thousand dollars each on an annual basis, okay? There's a sewer TV truck for a hundred twenty thousand dollars, there's a medium and medium traffic sign truck for a hundred vehicles, there's a fire rescue truck, three fourteen, a fire rescue truck, remember, that is not going to be part of this, of this transfer, but that money is necessary to go along with the reprogrammed funds, I think we'll be talking about those CBPG reprogrammed funds. We need to supplement that money to buy that power truck, that's why I wanted to bring that up, in terms of the three fourteen, and that's where the three fourteen comes from. And there's six dump boxes for water and sewer tandem axle trucks, and that's for a total of two hundred ninety thousand dollars. That's the breakdown. But I did want to make sure that you all understood that, you know, the way that that's working, because I think there might have been a little confusion with the way it was presented before, okay?
Mr. Newsom, I have a, I would like that, though, that breakdown in writing.
Sure.
My question, though, is, what, you said there were mo, there could be various reasons why it didn't meet, or didn't get done in the last budget, if you could maybe speak to what those were. But then my second question is, why all of a sudden had we budgeted to purchase our own snowplow trucks?
Yep.
And how much have we allotted to that, to changing to deeming that leasing was the way that we were going to go?
Hold on, let me pull that, pull that back up. So originally, let me answer your first question first.
Okay.
So let's talk about, let's leave the dump boxes off, because I think that wasn't, I'm so late, Mr. Dickie W, so you can answer some of those questions for you. But let's leave the dump boxes off for a second. So there were a number of requisites for purchases that came up, I think it came up before council, I can't talk specifically about what those were. There are a number of requisites we need to, that came before council, that were to be done, either because there was a delay in getting in front of the city council, and approving the city council, and RTAB, right? Because this was last year, that's calendar year, so because of that, we had to go in front of council and in front of RTAB. Some of the vehicles that I mentioned, outside of the fire truck and the dump boxes, those delays forced us to move into the next fiscal year. So that's the reason that those purchases didn't happen in the last fiscal year.
And the only reason I ask that question is because it seemed like we had began to do a pretty good job of navigating when the RTAB and the council needed to approve some things. And now my, my question, of course, or the thing that raises to me is, now we're in snow.
Yeah.
And the trucks that we should have bought then, we probably need now.
Yeah.
And so that's a question for me. And then the other thing, I appreciate the speculation, but I would have liked to know for sure that that was the, the reason why this didn't get done.
We're talking about Resolution thirty-two, do you have any history?
And I want to say, I do want to support this, but, but even the information that you're feeding, like, for me, I've been on council.
Yeah.
So some of these things might be relatively, I might be able to remember, but for some of my colleagues that are about to be responsible for making a one million dollar approval, they have no knowledge at all, except for information, and they're probably comfortable, I don't know. But it just would have been helpful to have that in hand, like we talked about.
Yeah, and that's to that point, can you talk-
Is this the ones that we approved, that were approved by RTAB, that didn't make it RTAB?
No, that was already, that's, this is different.
Yes, you have your councilman Mays.
So mostly, I'm speculating a little bit, but this is for our next year's, if I'm not mistaken, our next year's purchase of-
Councilman Mays.
You've got to move closer to the microphone, I can't hear you.
So this is for our next year's purchase of fleet vehicles?
But he said it was allocated last budget year, that wasn't used, so it's not for, yeah. So that's, that's a conflict of information.
That's, this is different.
Okay, well, I guess I don't understand what he was presenting.
So let me, I'll tell you what, what I will do, Councilwoman Galloway, I will send you the information I have. I do apologize that I sent you a series of things for different resolutions, but then send that to different one. I will send you the breakdown in writing.
Okay.
And between now and the time to get to the floor, if you all choose to move to the floor, I will have you the rest of the past history.
No problem, Councilman Mays.
Yeah, with all the calls I got from a variety of wars, yesterday, maybe a little the day before, and today, and I did three ways with Mr. Branch, dealt with calling Betty Weisman's office, so forth and so on. I'm going to support this, particularly if it's got some money in it for snowplows, and that's what I'm getting at. I've been getting calls left and right from third ward, seventh ward, this ward, that ward, and I keep telling them, I'm first ward, but I swear we can catch you, Councilman Mays. I'm like, that's good, but I ain't trying to, but anyway, God bless you, let's see what we can do, and then I do a call. So I'm going to support it, because of the four trucks, I'm not beli, believing any other spending. This is the money that's going to supplement the fire truck, that sewer TV thing is going to be good too, particularly when we go into the next phase of the past, so I have no problem with it. I'm going to support this motion moving it to council, and right now with what I'm hearing. That was my main question. Chairperson Galloway, what was the purchase is going to be, so he's answered that, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Alan?
Hey, you, you listed the equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Eva?
I didn't see that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Between now and like I did, commit to getting you, I will get you that home in writing shortly, but definitely hold those for you.
Did you say a debt and a money for snowplows?
Yes.
Okay.
And so my follow-up question is that, these snowplows, when are they going to be on the streets?
As soon as we can get the bid out.
Okay, so, so there is a bid, how, how long does the bid process normally take?
It can take anywhere from, say, a month, a month and a half.
The bid process is not the problem, the, the building of the trucks is actually the problem.
So the trucks have to be built?
So once we get, once we get them bid, and then that's approved, we get through that, then they'll go in line at the upfitter, once they receive the chassis from the manufacturer, and then they'll be, they'll be built. So they have to have boxes, plows, et cetera put on.
So these snowplows will not affect our snow that we're getting calls from now, they'll be here available for the next season's snow?
Potentially next year.
But they might not be?
Yeah, we're at that window where we may not have them.
But to this point, let's not come back here in nine months because we didn't want to do this action. And again, I'm pulling up the budget actuals that I did send you guys about two or three weeks ago to show the help of the fund, of the street fund, of the, of our fleet fund balance. Let's not be here eight to nine months, and I think that's what Mr. Ben's is getting, because it's not a sense of urgency right now for next year, and then next year hits and we have to take an action.
And Mr. Newsom, I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is, I don't want the perception that's being discussed here today as if these trucks are going to be an impact on what we experienced this weekend, right? And all I'm saying is, we've had snow problems for the last, I've been on council for four years, and so in even hearing what I'm hearing today, the fact that there was the possibility that we didn't purchase these and get them through to RTAB or make whatever necessary processes or decisions that we needed to, because we did a pretty good job, the administration and the council together, of getting before the RTAB things that needed to be approved because we needed them done right away. Even if the RTAB did not come here, they would have a meeting in Lansing so that they can approve those necessary expenditures in an effort to support the community. And so I just simply wanted to make those things known for the record. I don't want to be here next year, but I don't want us to act as though we're making a decision today that's going to stop the phone call that we're probably going to continue to get for the rest of the season.
And that's true.
Okay, thank you. And so, Councilman Mays?
Yeah, we get phone calls normally for snow, just so you know, it's when the phone calls come from snow. Through you, Madam Chair, we have, what, about six trucks out there?
The city has thirteen trucks.
Thirteen trucks. And so whatever side of the town they start on, sometime they might start on in the ninth ward, sometime maybe in the third, second, first, last, whatever, sometime in the first ward first. So I'm accustomed for four years, when it's a snow, it's going to be called. And so I try to get people to be patient and wait, but the more trucks, the better. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm in support of this.
Is Councilwoman Seale?
I just have one question. So the trucks we have now, how many we have now?
Thirteen, I believe.
Thirteen, okay, so this is not going to replace into thirteen, this is going to make it nineteen around the road.
No, it's going to, it's going to replace, the newest plow trucks we have are two thousand sixes, so we have some two thousand fours, I believe, internationals, that it's going to replace. There's three of those, and I think we'll have a net gain of one total in the fleet.
Okay.
But, 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 understand, these plows are going to come with wings, which in effect actually doubles the capacity of the truck. So, I mean, we're, we're kind of moving into the twenty-first century on snow removal when it comes to that. But I want everybody else to know, I mean, I get the same calls that you guys do, but you need, you need to understand what happened this week. We had four snow events this week. So we had four separate snow events totaling over fourteen inches of snow. And I'm very, I'm very aware that folks are not happy with the snow removal, but we had crews working around the clock. When you get these snow events back to back to back to back, what happens is it takes its toll not only on the equipment, but on the operators as well. And, you know, people can't work around the clock. DOT rules only allow them to work sixteen hours on, they have to have eight hours off when they're in the CDL deal. That's what has to happen. I drove through Burton, Genesee County, our roads are pretty good in comparison. I'm not saying they're perfect, they're, they're about the same. So I think overall, the guys did a fantastic job with what was put on us.
Can I ask one question, Rob?
I'm sorry, is it still my turn?
Well, I thought that you had answered your question, but go ahead.
Just one last question, I just want to know, what do we do with the five then that we'll be getting rid of? Do we auction those off, or what do we do with those?
Yeah, they'll go through the auction process.
So that's revenue back to the general fund, or to actually the fleet fund?
It goes to fleet, yeah.
So Rob, can I ask you a question? We live in Michigan. What we've experienced in the last few days, some could say was, has been worse, some could say has been better. Is, do we have the ability, because we can do a trajectory, if you will, in which we can see about possibly contracting workers? Because we don't need them all the time. But do we have the ability to build in, like, emergency help for scenarios like this? So we know that it wouldn't be often, but usually I think professional services is sometimes what we use that line for. We know that there may be some bad snow, we might need some help from some contractors to help us come in. Do we have the ability, because we don't want anybody to work around the clock? I think your people have done the best that they can, but, but it's not their fault. If we're not making or building in the ability to have extra workers and/or leases or, I don't know, temporary contracts with companies that can, can help us plow the snow, that's not a reflection of the employees. Is that something that we can look at?
You can look at it, there's, there's actually a fundamental problem with that concept.
Okay.
And the fundamental problem is the equipment. So it's no different than when you get a, you get a rainstorm and you want to go rent a pump. You can't rent the pump because everybody else needs the pump. So the same thing when you get a snow event, there's not people that have fleets of trucks just sitting waiting for the City of Flint to call them and bring them in. And they're not going to buy the fleet of trucks because we choose to maybe utilize them a couple times a year. That's, that's the issue with it.
And so to kind of connect the dots, I believe that's what, we were trying to purchase these in last fiscal year, and so they'd be ready for this year.
So as part of our snow plan, we do have, I mean, we utilize water and sewer as part of our snow removal plan. We've been utilizing our one-ton trucks, which maybe you guys didn't get the, the feedback that we did, but I've gotten great feedback on every snow event we've had this year. This particular one, again, four separate events, each one over four inches, takes about two days to clean up. That's, that's our capacity. So, I mean, if you look at it, we had four separate snow events, fourteen, over fourteen inches of snow over the last week. If you add up the days, that should be eight days, which they're just about cleaning up as we're talking about right now, they're about finishing it up.
Madam Chair.
Councilman, I, I, I wanted to just end with this, Rob, so fundamentally, there's really, because once we get these fleet in, you're saying that we're hopefully going to have fourteen trucks instead of thirteen, but we will have better equipped trucks, right? Is that what you were saying?
We'll have better equipped trucks, and, I mean, the reality is, with newer equipment, it shouldn't break downs off.
Okay.
I mean, one of the things, I mean, and again, our fleet garage has done a great job helping us this week keep our trucks up and running, but they're old. I mean, they're twelve years old is the newest trucks that we have.
Thank you, Councilman Mays.
Yeah, I usually go off a memory, and I share this with some of y'all. If I'm not mistaken, in the old days, for forty emergency managers sold the garbage trucks to Republic, garbage trucks used to have snowplows and help out. We used that fleet of garbage trucks, and I bet that record will show that. When you look at the news right now, last I looked, we were at sixty-seven inches in Flint, sagging all different places. We on a record pace for snow this, this, this winter, if it get us to eighty-three. So I'm watching sixty-seven, eighty-three. So I told people, I'm sticking with the administration, moving snow, how it work, whatever. I will talk about it in council meeting, and I'm talking about it. So I'm doing that on purpose because I'm talking to people, letting them know we on a record pace. You exactly right about these last weekends, and we had some, people take some equipment from us, called emergency managers, and so now we trying to get equipment and stuff back together. I'm ready to vote.
Just real quick, based on what's been discussed here, is it possible that, like the public that does our garbage, that they have a large fleet, would they have a few extra trucks to help us, possibly?
There is a potential there. I think Flint was somewhat unique in the fact that they actually put plow bounce on their garbage trucks. And the last garbage trucks that we owned, that we bought, were Peterbilt's, and they were not configured to hang plows on, unfortunately, the frame rails were not configured.
Is that something that could be investigated, though, whether our Republic has that possibility?
It could be investigated. I would, I would like to bring you guys' attention, I want to rewind your memories a little bit to the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen winter, when we had just under a twenty-inch snow event. And if you remember correctly, some of that snow didn't get moved for over three weeks.
That's right.
So understand that the snow only stopped falling yesterday at about two o'clock in the afternoon. And we're just now, we're twenty-nine hours after, and the crews are currently really finishing up the city. I mean, I, I don't know what it is that is expected, but I really think that that's a pretty Herculean effort. If, if you guys just take the time to drive around Flint and realize how big it is, and how much snow they're moving, I mean, they're doing a wonderful job. I mean, I can't take the credit for it because I'm not the one out driving the truck, but these guys that are driving these trucks are spending sixteen hours on, we give them eight off, and then they come right back at them. And I mean, they've done, I just think they've done a fabulous job, and I, I understand that people are going to complain, but I really think we, we need to, we need to praise our workers, they've done a wonderful job.
Okay. Is there any more discussions? Hearing none, all in favor of moving Mr. Counsel, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any extension? Move Mr. Counsel, Councilman Mays.
I would move one eight zero zero three three to council.
Is that your?
A second.
Yeah, that one, there's an amended version.
So that, so, so we'll get to that, so we'll skip over that one because I see the point one on the next page, so we can cross out one eight zero three three. Madam Chair, I withdraw that motion, and I would move one eight zero zero three six to council. That's dealing with life and short-term disability insurance.
Okay.
Councilman Gira, it's been moved and supported, is there any discussion? I do choose.
Mr. Newsom, I just have a question, do you have the information that I requested?
Yes, so you all, I don't know if you had a chance to check your emails, so there is the details, detailed proposals for life insurance and short-term disability insurance that you all should have had in your email inboxes as of, I think, three hours ago. So you have that information. Unfortunately, Cornerstone is concerned about bringing confidential information regarding what municipalities have selected what insurance carriers, as I was concerned about. So they did, they did confirm with me that this morning that they don't feel comfortable providing that information, so I do apologize for that. I do have in my inbox somewhere, the counts of, you know, which providers got which, but I don't know, which providers that have municipalities, but I do not have which specific provider was selected by which municipality. I apologize for that, it is a confidential issue.
Okay, and I just want to, Mr. Newsom and I had a conversation today, and he did share this information, and I just want to say it for the record. What I shared with Mr. Newsom is the fact that they would say that it's a confidential issue alarms me because they are the ones that said it before us. They were the ones that said there was X, Y, Z amount of municipalities that are serviced by this, and I shared with Mr. Newsom, my concern was, although they gave their recommendation, they just kind of reminded me of a company that was more pro one company than the other. Instead of just sharing with us their findings and giving us the ability to make a choice ourselves, they were selling that company. And in, in part of their selling, they even gave a couple of examples and shared that they serviced the majority of the municipalities that they serviced. So since they mentioned that, I didn't think that it was a confidential situation because they used it as part of their selling tool. So the fact that now they weren't, just for me, was a little bit alarming. I told him it reminded me of a person that supports a certain pharmaceutical company, and they come into the doctor's office, and they just have a choice because that pharmaceutical has been better to them. And so I just wanted to say that for the record because we talked about that, I respect confidentiality. I just questioned the fact that they stepped over the line, they opened the door, and so I just wanted to share that. So I'm all good, no other further, no further-
I just have a question.
Oh, Miss-
Which company are you referencing?
The one that they recommended, which was, they were national, correct?
Okay.
And so, hearing none, all in favor of moving this to council, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? It is moved to council.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Mays.
Yeah, I would move one eight zero zero three three point one, the amended resolution dealing with the recognition of the gun sale revenue from the auction to council. What's going on, is it something wrong?
I thought, yeah, absolutely, thank you, yeah, thank you.
Withdraw that motion and start over, I would move to amend, you should have did, that's what I would add.
That's what she was trying to do, right.
Yeah, so I missed it. So I would move to amend one eight zero zero three six, no, three three. One eight zero zero three three to one eight zero zero three three point one, which is the amended resolution for the recognition of gun sale revenues from the auction. And I apologize for not knowing what you were saying, but that's what be my motion to amend it as written here in the resolution before.
Mr. Newsom, that's your call, Councilman Gira.
A second.
It's been second, is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Seale?
I, I just like to note here that although this is not the vote to have a gun sale or approve a gun sale, it's just to deal with the revenue from the gun sale that was approved. I meant to say this at the last meeting, didn't get an opportunity. I actually just wanted on the record that it seems crazy to me that with all of the gun violence that we have in this country and in this city, that we are, even though these are internet sales and you don't know where they're going to end up, on principle, I think it's crazy that we're putting guns back out there on the streets, that once they've been confiscated, we're doing that. And I know it's a bit of revenue, I didn't add this all up, how much this is, but for me personally, on principle, I would say have them destroyed, don't put more guns out on the streets. Just wanted that on the record.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Worthy, and then Mr. Mays.
I share that same concern, I think the, we need less violence in Flint, especially if the guns go right back into Flint. But I also want to on the record that I'm, I'm not totally in favor of those sales revenue, I understand and I support that. But I would hope our gun laws would change, that's a nationwide thing that we need to worry about, especially in light of all the school violence and shootings. As a former teacher, that's a huge concern, and people are dying at record levels every day in this country. That's all, thank you, Councilman Mays.
Yeah, I would just want the record to reflect- Yeah, I would just want the record to reflect that when the police department decided to do the gun sale auctions, that communications came before council. And it was discussed and communicated and if I'm not mistaken, it was a vote of council. Some folks might not have been here. And, you know, you might not have been on council yet. Uh, Ms. Fields was here, whether she was here or not, but that discussion had happened. And there was communications and I remember that discussion and voted. Because I took a position on the revenue aspect of it. Now, I hear people say over and over, a hundred thousand gets a police, a hundred thousand get police. I'm gonna support it. And so, whatever people do, I'm on record, I can't have a gun, don't own a gun, can get shot, don't carry a gun, don't use a gun. And guns don't keep being gun. So, if they came and debated it and wanted revenue so forth and so on, it had been hashed out. Yeah, it's a new council, might not have been here. But that was hashed out and voted on. It's not like the police department just did it without coming before council. So, wherever we at now, I'm gonna vote to move this to council. And, um, we'll be supporting it on the floor.
Um, Mr. Newsom, I had, um, a couple of questions for you if you don't mind.
Yep.
Um, I think one of the questions that I, and I don't know if I raised it, um, when we originally talked about it or if I dreamt about it. Um, but I was wondering, why would we be establishing different accounts when there's already accounts allocated for these costs?
Yep. So, I actually did see you an email earlier today about that. But I'll explain for all of council.
Please, okay.
When Ms. Galloway's talking about, if you notice, we already have wages, fringes, accounts, we have revenue accounts. But what we wanted to do, at least the police department wanted to do in terms of accounting, notice that these are going through the two ninety-six fund, which you don't want to, we didn't want to mix this up with any funds that are funded by millages. Right? So, there could be people specifically, uh, funded by, you know, if you, you're gonna have people, wages and salaries are there. So, that's, you know, maybe a cop two or three that are funded with the revenue from this, from these, these sales, right? So, the other question that you asked, Ms. Galloway, was the question around, uh, professional services. What are we gonna use, what are we gonna use it for? So, the game plan is after you take the balance of what's left over, after you buy, if you pay for the salaries of, of police officers, they will also use this to overhaul the, uh, indoor gun range, right? So, that's how this is going to work. But to make, back, back to your point, this is flowing through the two ninety-six fund versus, say, the public safety fund or the general fund because we didn't want to mix revenue and cross those streams.
So, does that mean that, um, some of the funds that we normally would allocate in the general funds would actually receive some relief to be placed other places?
Indirectly, yes. So, in theory, you know, we're gonna review the police department budget, propose budget for the overall budget process. And, um, you know, if, I don't know what, you know, I don't know exactly what the proposal is.
Okay.
If they were to propose that they need, say, an additional two, three, four cops on the street, then you can fund it with this revenue and this is the way they set it up versus the revenue from the general fund. So, in theory, either I can have more cops or maybe I can have more police officers through this, through this, um, process. Or I can, I can pull some police officers from the general fund and put them into this, into this fund funded by this revenue. So, that's the reason it's done this way through the two ninety-six fund.
Huey, can you tell me the difference between direct fringe and overtime?
Fringe, that's more of a benefit. So, that helps to pay for your health insurance, some of those, some of those benefits. Whereas overtime is stricter, the cash you get for working outside of your membership.
Okay. And so, these funds have been pretty allocated, it's pretty specific.
Yeah.
Um, so, does that mean that they already have something in mind for these dollars, like?
The way the formula works, we'll hire a police officer or police officers at a certain level. And their forms, my friends back here in administration know PSWs very well. But the PSWs are built so that, you know, given a certain rank, the, it breaks out what that cost is going to be. So, if you're gonna pay someone, say, forty thousand dollars, there's a certain, you know, if they're in the, say, they're in the direct benefit, the defined benefit plan for, for retirees, right? So, in theory, there's a, there's a formula that goes to a different account. If you see the breakdown, there's numbers that, there's numbers that flows through a different account, they're not seeing the cash. And then there's an estimate for overtime. So, all these different benefits go to different accounts and then overtime is its own separate account. So, that's the way that works.
And the reason why I was asking is because, um, one of the things, just wanted to be sure that, um, with the general fund, there is more oversight typically.
That, that's a, I'm glad, I'm glad you raised that. The way the two ninety-six is set up to work, um, is that it's, again, set up to collect the revenue from different grants and then disperse them, right? Um, so, to that point, our plan is that we, you know, if, if revenue drops, obviously we got to cross that bridge we get to. But our plan is that we won't, we do not, we will not, do not intend to spend any more money that's flowing through this. But this, but again, we use this, this fund to channel funding from different grants.
So, if the, if the, um, general fund found itself low and they needed some equipment and, and general funds didn't have it, is it possibly that they would consider moving these funds over there in an effort to support what they wanted?
Pay for it out of this fund directly. And so, that in theory will come reporting.
Okay.
Because that would be in the minute.
All right.
Um, this, uh, to update their gun range?
Yeah.
Do you know the cost of that?
Um, the, if whatever they have in that allocation right now for professional services, I have-
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, whatever that number is for professional services, if it ain't one to a hundred?
Yeah.
Twenty thousand.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, so that's what that, right now that's-
Because I was thinking maybe they could do, I've been to gun range, watch it. I think it's south of east. Maybe they could print that, but twenty thousand, I don't know.
And that way they don't have to continue to go use somebody else's.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of moving this to council, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Move to council.
Madam Chair.
Councilman May.
Yeah, I would move one eight zero zero four five, the settlement Smith versus the City of Flint to council.
It's been moved, is there a second? Councilman Davis. Second, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of moving this to council?
This question.
Mr. Griggs.
I thought, when we talked about this before, I thought we was talking about just the guy that fell in the manhole?
We, we would have talked about it in closed session. So, um- Councilman May.
Let me withdraw that motion and back up. We voted to amend one eight zero zero three three point one. And the clerks just called to my attention. Now, we got a vote to move the amendment to council. So, I withdraw the motion on the Smith settlement and come back to it, Mr. Griggs. But I would now move one eight zero zero three three point one. The amended resolution for the recognition of gun sale revenues to council.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Davis has been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of moving this to council, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It moves.
Madam Chair.
Councilman May.
Now, I would move one eight zero zero four five, the settlement Smith versus City of Flint to council.
It's been moved, is there a second? Councilman Gera.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there discussion?
Um, Madam Chair.
Councilman May.
Through you to the city attorney, could you remind us what this is?
This is a workers comp case for a Flint firefighter. So, we spoke about it in a closed session last week.
Oh, 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 okay. Come over.
Mr. Charles.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of moving this to council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Move to council.
Madam Chair.
Councilman May.
Since I see Mr. Alan Gilbert in the room, I'm not making this motion. I know it's coming out of the seventh ward, but since we chairing the meeting, maybe I reconsider and move one eight zero zero four six, the appointment, the, the reappointment of Mr. Alan Gilbert to, um, council.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
There, Madam Chair.
Councilman May.
Is Mr. Gilbert, you would like to be reappointed? Through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, sir, I would. Uh, Councilman May, if-
Well, somebody feel your word.
I'm willing to serve.
Hey, you like that board already?
I do, I like-
I can speak for him.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna support it then, Pastor Gilbert.
And I just want to say for the record, Pastor Gilbert has, um, been gracious to serve in this capacity. Um, um, we talked about it and, and there is the ability to help in, in, in whatever way we can. And I appreciate your, um, willingness to continue to serve. So, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of sending this to council, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Move to council.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Fields?
I would like to move one eight zero zero four seven, one eight zero zero four eight, one eight zero zero four nine to council.
Is there a second, Ms. Worthing? It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Um, Madam Chair.
Councilman May.
Yeah, when I do appointments and sometime I set, go, do them slow and separate them because I don't always vote the same as far as moving it to council. I'll support moving all of them to council as a group. And then I peruse them and see do I vote yeah or no term and see if I split them up on the floor. I might not, but, um, based upon the way time was moving and I'm looking at the agenda. I was taking them, one by one, but I'll support moving them to council as a group and we still might be on the back.
It's been moved in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of moving this to council, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? They move to council. Um-
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Fields.
Um, before you, I don't know if you have anything under new business, but I would like to make a referral to, um, our finance officer and to legal.
Point of order.
Councilman May.
Let the chair go through ordinance's discussion items and get the new business if she choose, but I'm quiet. And everything-
Madam Chair. Ma- I mean, um, Madam Clerk. Is it necessary for me to, um, have to say them like we say on council?
For, for the record, you've been one indicator of any ordinances, discussion items, and then-
So, new business will be referrals? Um, no. Um, I'm not, if, if, if it's okay, I would just like to chair the meeting. And I'm only asking that, Ms. Brown, because normally referrals are made in or in between other things. And so, if we're going to set a precedent, I'm just trying to understand. Because for those of us that don't know, new business was just added to each of our things. And so, I just want to do things orderly, Ms. Brown. It's been my first time sharing with new business being at the bottom of the thing. And so, I'd like to do it according to however benefits the whole, um, um, the body. And so, I just want to know.
From a technical standpoint, special affairs would be for any unanswered question from the committees.
Correct.
Okay?
Correct.
As well as, um, any emergency thing that may come up.
Correct.
Any new business I think you've taken up from the floor.
Thank you. And I just want to say for the record, I don't want polarization in this meeting. I just want us to respect each other. And so, I don't want one person to think that one thing is acceptable if we're gonna have processes. I just thought that it was appropriate since this was a new item that has been added to our, I just want to make sure that I do it right. And so, Councilman May? Councilman May.
Yeah, my only point was we had ordinance's discussion items, the new business. I'm not opposed to referrals going on the new business, but that was my point of order and I think it was missed.
I heard it.
Okay.
But I wanted to clarify too.
Okay.
And so, are there any ordinances? Am I, usually the clerk, Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk, do I need to chair like we do on the floor? There's, are there any ordinances?
There are no new ordinances.
Any discussion items? Thank you. So, now we're at new business, Ms.- Well, I want to get to Ms. Fields, Councilman May.
Maybe she gathered the discussion.
Oh, do you have a discussion?
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, we had to leave last meeting. Uh, and I think all my questions answered, uh, about the resolution that we had passed, uh, concerning the grant funding and redistributing, redistributing, re-
Redistributing.
Help me.
Re-allocation.
Re-allocation. And, uh, I don't know if it's appropriate to speak to that here or during the council meeting.
Um-
Madam Chair.
Councilman May.
Yeah, I think it is appropriate and I think it's relevant. I think we wanted to find out, um, I see Ms. Wilcox here. There was some issues I read about in the newspaper as it relates to what she alluded to about money from more than one year. And I don't know if she's had time to communicate with her and get sufficient answers. So, I think it is proper to discuss this because we're gonna go into the meeting, the next regular meet. And that would be the meeting that I would look at for any reconsideration and or whatever. So, through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Wilcox and anybody in the administration who can branch me up the speed, that's a discussion item that I wanted to hear about, either in special affairs or the floor. We got a couple minutes, so through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Wilcox.
Well, first of all, before I, uh, before I address Ms. Wilcox, and I appreciate recognizing you, I don't want to take the floor from Ms. Worthing. Did you have specific questions that you would like-
Point of order, Madam Chair. You gave me the floor.
No.
You did.
Right, but-
And so, now I had the floor. I'm saying through you to Ms. Wilcox, and that's proper.
But Councilman May, I, I made an error. I thought that you were addressing Mrs. Worthing, not taking the floor back from her. I, I made a mistake, Councilman May, and I'm, I'm fixing it now, I did.
All you did was, Ms. Worthing asked a question of anybody. I was given the floor and chimed in. I had no problem yielding to you, Ms. Worthing. The bottom line is when we can hear from Ms. Wilcox, that's, I think, what she was asking about, so.
Councilman May, you're right.
I, I think I am right.
But, but, but Councilman May, I just want to say that when I answered, and you are, I just want to say that when I recognized you, I thought, I, I didn't, my fault, I wasn't intending to give you the floor.
She let you know that she had something else. She asked a question.
Well, how could she if you-
She could, she could, she could. Don't put it on me.
Did you want to address the council?
If, if there are specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Ms. Worthing.
I have heard, and I don't know if this is true enough, but, uh, that Passiflame owes the city money as far as on the water bills. Can you speak to that, that's true or not?
Wait a minute. Point of, uh, well, wait, wait a minute. Okay. Um, I'm gonna ask-
Point of information.
Councilman May.
Is that relevant to black rent allocation money?
I can speak to that.
Well, no, no. As the chair, what I'm going to say is the information that we need to figure out if the reallocation needs to be, um, what's the word that I'm looking for? Reconsidered, is that piece is not relevant?
To me, it is.
Well, well, I mean-
I mean, if he owes the city money, we should give him money.
Ms. Worthing, I, Ms. Worthing, I respect that. But, but, if I may, if I may just say for the record, for me, making sure that we understand what HUD's expectations are for reallocation of funds, regardless of who they're going to, seems to be the overshadowing concern, at least for the council, to determine whether this needs to be reconsidered or not, right? And so, once, once we decide whether that's going to be done, the other pieces of how the people get to it, I think, and I don't know, I, I just deem that chairing this meeting, that's what's relevant. And so, uh, and, and I'm not saying that what you're asking for is not relevant, Ms. Worthing. I'm just saying for the, the immediate action that we have to take tonight on the reconsideration, that piece is gonna be a piece that we're going to decide on when we decide that, yes, we are going to allow the reallocation of funds. I don't know if I'm making sense or not. I hope I'm not being confusing.
I have no, I, I-
No, no.
I don't understand, it's not relevant because it's, it's relevant for my vote.
Well, right now, the, the concern is HUD is saying- Well, right now, the, the concern is HUD is saying these funds shouldn't be allocated this way, right?
I understand that, I understand that piece, and that is relevant as well.
Okay.
But if that all checks out and they owe the city money and I've helped to vote for recon, you know, for the reallocation, then that would upset me.
Correct. But first things first, tonight, we need to either reconsider or not. If we don't reconsider, we can't, is that right?
There, Madam Chair, if I may.
Councilwoman Mays.
Whether it's big brothers, big sisters, United Way or whatever, they got a wide bill, whether they done paid it on the twelfth or the thirtieth or next month, we've never addressed that. If it's a written policy, I have no problem discussing it, Ms. Worthing, but I do agree, let's see what updated information. And if you wanna check somebody's wide account, whether it's North Flint reinvestment, Falls Avenue, or Mr. Flynn himself. Let's make sure we checking the right accounts to see if it's relevant and if it's written policy. So, can we take it step by step? And I have no problem with you checking on anything. We got subpoena power, we can check on whatever, but let's make sure we on track. So, I would rather hear from the expert.
Ms. Worthing, I just want to say that your concern is valid, and so, but.
If it's a policy, if there ain't no policy.
Can I just respond to that really quickly, because I think I could help with that actually. We have a process in place for, um, any agency that we award funds to. When we go through the process to execute a contract, we do verify that there's a good standing process. So, we have to verify, and all organizations have to be in good standing with the city. So, if there are any delinquent water bills, property taxes outstanding, they come back to us. And then, we cannot enter into a contract until that is actually satisfied. So, you asked for Pastor Flynn, that's, that's a different issue. We don't deal with individuals. I'm assuming you meant North Flint reinvestment corporation? Um, that is something, and it is my understanding that tho- that those delinquent bills that were identified at some point have all been resolved, so.
Um, and I, based on that, I, I would like to make a referral. Um, a referral that all council people receive a copy of the rules, policies, or process guidelines for dispersing CDBG funds and or the reallocation. Um, and, and in that, um, we just want to understand how HUD, understand HUD's concerns, like, what is the process before so that we never get to where we are? Does that make sense? I don't know if you guys have procedures in place.
We do, of course.
You do, okay, okay, okay.
And I just want to address one thing related to that. When you say HUD's concerns, um, HUD doesn't typically have concerns with our process. Those concerns were elevated by, um, a reporter, by some misstatements that were made in the news, in the M Live article. And so, the questions were actually, um, just questions related to the article that they read in the paper that had some information that is not accurate. So, that is what actually precipitated their questions. And so, what I'm doing right now is responding to those questions and have responded to those questions to really kind of evolve that discussion, uh, towards satisfaction. So, I would not characterize it at this point as HUD's concerns. Um, there's questions that they're asking based upon an article that they read, um, and also based upon, I think, um, communication from community members to direct, um, HUD employees. So, I would not classify it as concerns at this point. We're having a discussion with them, we're answering their questions, we're resolving their questions, and then we're just taking it step by step as part of our due diligence.
Madam Chair. Yeah, when I look at the agenda for the, um, regular council meeting as it relates to the relevant arena, um, and not saying that this is not relevant discussion. We had a little time, but, um, through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Wilcox, if we have rules that say we need to do reconsideration at the next council meeting and, you know, I'm a believer in rules, I believe you can suspend the rule and you might could do it in another piece. But at this point, based upon those concerns, because I said to trustees of this city on the council with me and others, quit telling people to call HUD and send letters to HUD and raise red flags. But the community and council people can do what they want. I'm not trying to raise red flags and jeopardize money, but I do want to vote right. That's why my statement was if all i's is dotted and t's is crossed. Now, the red flag's been raised by whoever raised them, I'm hoping that they'll come back when you communicate on their questions that's been raised. Everything is in order. I remember this conversation clearly, Ms. Fields. You were saying that it had to be reallocated with the approval of the citywide advisory council. Admit that that ain't true based upon Article thirty-three. So, we heard that concern. And I know Mr. Woodson said on it, and my ward, Mr. Harrison said on it. So, that citywide advisory conversation that was raised around the table when it was being reallocated was not accurate. Because that ain't really properly in place based upon the emergency manager. That's one. Two, I've heard that money has been reallocated in more than one year. And the communications had to do with ten percent, three hundred and fifty thousand on three point five million. But if it's technically for more than one year, we might not be beyond that three point five for one year. But Ms. Wilcox also said, is some internal communication with fifteen percent. So, all of these things I heard throughout about citywide advisory committee, that one seems to be not accurate. The ten percent might be fifteen percent. The allocations might be for more than one year and don't even qualify for that public participation input, whatever the technical word is. And that's what I was asking Ms. Wilcox for a feeling on. And regardless of one way or another, if we reconsider and table into these questions as answers, maybe we will, maybe we won't. But that's the specific question that I'm trying to find out. See, new stuff, she's answered that about Flint, North Flint reinvestment, water bills. I've been in so many council meetings, I know that people from the public, and they have the right to, they have the right to talk to council people. But council people, before we get out here, I'm saying stuff about folks as best we can. We should talk to the people in that department first. Now, keep in mind, don't get me to lie, because I will bring it on the floor. I will talk names, name names, but that will start something. If you start naming folks' name in the community, like Pastor Flynn and not saying North Flint reinvestment and don't know the rules, it kind of sends a aura of something. And so, I'm really trying to caution this council. I have no problem getting to the nitty gritty and talking and politicking and whatever. And so, remember, I ain't blaming you, Mr. Griggs, but ever you have to, if you need a ride and you ain't got one, I'll take you home. You don't have to leave no meeting when we trying to take care of business, because other people left. Oh, believe me, that's relevant, because she said she wasn't here and left. That was her statement.
Councilwoman Mays.
Madam Chair. It has a lot to do with information and flow.
Councilwoman Mays, I'm not finished.
Madam Chair, I don't want to appeal you. You need to quit interrupting me when I'm making points. You want me to appeal? You want, because you don't have a floor, I do. And you done sat and talked all this meeting. I don't care if you the chair, you don't run it.
It's inappropriate for you to start making mention of.
It's inappropriate for you to interrupt me when I refer to people who left early and tell Mr. Griggs he don't have to.
It's not relevant to what we're talking about right now.
It's relevant to this discussion. Because we was in meetings and agendas was gone. I chair HUD's agenda, Councilwoman Galloway.
Wrap up.
And if I don't?
Then I will rule you out of order.
You can do that now. I was in order, you was out of order, interrupted me when I'm discussing.
Councilwoman Mays, I'm gonna rule you out of order. I am tired of your intimidation tactics.
I mean, you seem like you intimidate me.
Stick to, stick to the process, stick to what you're talking about.
I appealed a ruling, Madam Chair.
There is an appeal for the ruling of the, it has been mo- moved and seconded. I will say this, the reason why I'm ruling him out of order, I am tired of you continuing to attack certain council people. You need to ma- remain relevant to the subject matter without bringing attention to someone else's actions and or what you deem to be necessary to bring it on camera to say what they did. Ms. Worthing acknowledged that she wasn't there, but for you to continue, Councilwoman Mays, it won't happen, not while I'm chairing a meeting. And so, now that that has been discussed, is there any other, um, discussion on the chair ruling him out of order for that behavior?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Davis.
It was, it was not an attack. All he did was, it was relevant to the conversation at the last meeting, because some members wasn't here to know what went on. It was, it was relevant, what he was speaking of.
And I just want to say for the record, I was here.
Point of order.
Councilwoman Mays, I can, I can say.
Go round to others, you can't dominate the discussion, because you the chair, call on the P.
I am.
Say I don't give you that right.
I do have something to say. Uh, I am in agreement with you that this is a technique that Councilwoman Mays uses often, intimidation, harassment, threats, um, and racial comments. And I actually want to make a formal referral to the law department for a legal opinion about this type of behavior according to the city of Flint policy established by Mr. Ambrose in twenty fifteen. So, I will not be voting to, uh, support this appeal, because it's constant and ongoing.
Councilwoman Worthing.
I'm in agreement with you, and I want to thank you, uh, for how you're chairing this meeting. Uh, once you said it's not relevant, which it's not relevant to the discussion at hand, then we need to move on. And, uh, it is intimidation, it's bullying, and, uh, I would like to hear what this referral says, because as I stated in a council meeting not long ago, that harassment in the workplace is not, it's not only unlawful, it's discrimination. And the city has so far, in my mind, not done one thing to move this along and, and investigate and, and do anything about it. And so, I'm very interested in hearing what the legal department has to say.
Do you want to?
I'll need to speak, please. You know, as far as our concerns, there is all kind of unprofessionalism going on here. First of all, he was talking, let him speak. Last week, um, Councilwoman Davis was interrupted. I think that everyone sitting at this table, we were all elected, we should be able to speak. We should be able to voice our concerns, our issues, okay, without being interrupted. It's unprofessional, point blank. I'm, I'm, I'm tired of it. And, and yes, I did second his, his appeal, just because it's very unprofessional to stop him, disrupt him from talking. I think, and, and we need to, we need to understand that everybody has a way to, um, putting into this dialogue, okay? We're supposed to be having dialogue here. And everybody's opinion should be respected, no matter how or which way they get to making their point. Everybody has a different way of, of, of making their point. Councilwoman Mays has a different way of bringing his point together, let him do it. Councilman, uh, Davis has a different way of bringing his point together, and I have a different way of bringing my point together. We all have a different way of bringing our points together, okay? I think it's very unprofessional to disrupt someone while they're speaking. And we, we need to change that rule. We need to, we need to talk about changing that rule.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Mays.
Yeah, Madam Chair, each time we get to a point lately, I withdrew the appeal, but the point is, it's a fact. You, y'all, you and Ms. Fields interrupted Mr. Davis last week, just because you the chair, once you get a floor, you can't just take it and interrupt. That's wrong, it's out of order. I've had lunch with Mr. Griggs, was it last week or this week, Mr. Griggs? Was it this week or last week? So, when I said to him, because of a ride situation, he didn't have to leave if he chose to or didn't choose to, I know what I was saying. Because he wanted to know what was happening, and I remember time when I wasn't driving. And so, I like to stay for meetings. Ms. Worthing started out identifying that she wasn't here. Everybody on YouTube or whatever seen what happened, they done talked to me about it. So, that ain't no attack, but what is an attack when you got the same two people making personal attacks on me? Racial. Ms. Fields said that in this discussion, race wasn't an issue till she brought it up. She brought up racism. Bullying, harassment, intimidation, these are some heavy adjectives toward this senior council person. The confidential memo that she sent out to Ms. Worthing and others.
Miss Galloway. Councilwoman Mays.
The, the confidential memo she sent out addressed her alleged racism. It's still a legal opinion there. I'm here to tell you, you can shake your head, Ms. Galloway, you can agree, but when they call me racist or bully.
Councilwoman Mays, you are appealing the chair.
I am arguing the appeal.
Really?
Yeah, really, I am, and you interrupting me again, that's what this appeal is. You can't take it. See, when we sat and listened to you, don't nobody interrupt, but when we, what is you steady mad about?
Just can't finish. I don't, I don't, I don't.
Why is you steady interrupting? You can't handle the chair, where you have to listen to others, is that's what the point.
Councilwoman Mays, because you continue.
I'm talking, Madam Chair, and I was doing pretty good. What are, you wrap up and shut up while I'm talking? That's what this is all about.
The, the email, the confidential email. Because I'm tired of the way that you monopolize it. No, we not, no, we not.
I can withdraw my appeal.
Because I can still have you removed.
Man, have me removed, have me removed.
If you withdraw, then I can have you removed.
Have me removed. Have me removed, since you're so bad.
I will.
Well, do it.
I will.
Do it.
Uh, I do want, Councilman, if he's dropping his, removing his appeal, then that means me ask, ruling him out of order, oh, that means I, I get to rule you out of order. And so, I can't have him removed if he doesn't appeal my chair, I mean, appeal my ruling. Is that right, Officer Netkell? Okay. And so, I want to, I, I, I want to say for the record, Councilwoman Mays, you can play these political games if you want to. And I respect your response, Mrs. Winfrey Carter, but I will tell you this, as the chair, you have to have the ability. Councilwoman Mays brings up things that are not relevant, but he continues to seal it.
Why is you arguing this? It's a point of order.
No, because, because I get to respond. Okay.
It's, it's removed, it's gone, move on. Point of order, quit arguing.
Can I, um, have a, a motion? Do you still have a referral, can you make it from the floor?
Could I make it now, it's very quick?
Okay.
Okay, based on the discussion of finance about the, uh, life insurance and short-term disability that you're going to investigate because of that for council.
Correct.
I would like you to also investigate, uh, and this is to Ms. Wheeler and to Mr. Nusa, because I don't know where the EFM orders come into this, but what it would take to re, uh, reinstitute the ability of city council to pay into a retirement benefits fund. Could you please investigate that for me? Thank you.
Ms. Wilcox, Mr. Gere has a question for you.
Yeah, going back to the CBT and they had a question from HUD. It was, you stated no contract had been signed yet, so that was confirmed that that was all legitimate and pretty legal.
Correct, that's part of our due diligence. Before we actually move into effectuating a contract, there are certain things that we have to verify, there's additional information we have to get, there's other requirements um, that we're required to satisfy before we can enter into contract. And so, that, that is, that is still, we have not entered into contract yet.
Okay, okay.
Councilwoman Wilcox, I have something. Um, I just want to say for the record, um, I sent Mrs., Mr. Steve Branch and Ms. Wilcox an email. And, Ms. Wilcox, I want you to understand how that email, Mr. Branch, how it came about. In speaking with President Winfrey, he thought that it would be a good idea to hopefully avoid a reconsideration if it were as simple as finding out what HUD's concerns were and what your response to HUD was. Um, but when I sent the email, and I'd like to read it for the record, I put, hello, Steve, I am requesting a copy of the HUD email sent to Ms. Wilcox be provided to all council members about concerns relating to the reallocated funds approved by the council on January twenty- be provided to all council members about concerns relating to the reallocated funds approved by the council on January twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. I would also like the response Ms. Wilcox gave to HUD be provided to all council members as well. In the committee meeting held on February seventh, two thousand eighteen, Ms. Wilcox stated she planned to respond to HUD February eighth, she said tomorrow. This information is needed prior to the Monday, February twelfth, two thousand eighteen city council meeting. Thank you for providing the council with the information needed to make the best fiduciary decisions on behalf of our city. In which, Ms. Wilcox, you responded, I say ask her to make a referral for this information at Monday's meeting, of which I would like to make that referral. Um, to have a copy of the email that HUD has sent to you stating their concerns and your response to them, so I'm making that referral also. But with that, I was concerned with that response only because in an effort of unity, to make sure that what we had all agreed upon didn't have to be revisited. So when I received that response, to me, it seemed like it wasn't providing me with the information specifically from HUD that they were asking about. So it wasn't about questioning anybody else's decisions or how they came up with, how they decided who got the money. It specifically was only asking for what is HUD saying their concern is. And so to not be able to get that prior to this meeting was, was disappointing to me. And I'm not, you know, just because it would have, to me, diffused everything that the media was saying, that people might have been saying because it came straight from a HUD representative, right? And so I'm making that referral. With that, my question will be to this council, if we do not um raise a reconsideration and table, however table works, do we miss the opportunity? If we don't raise it now, do we lose it? And whatever happens, then we have no say, I don't know, maybe the council can talk about that when we're out on the floor. You don't need to do a point of information, Councilman Mays.
Madam Chair, I don't think Ms. Wilcox is the expert on our procedure. You asked her would we lose an opportunity? I think we-
No, I wasn't asking her, I asked the council.
Madam Chair, can I finish talking?
No, because you must be presenting this.
Why I can't finish talking, you can't keep interrupting, wrong folk.
I didn't ask Ms. Wilcox though, just so you know.
Well, well, let me finish and then correct me, that's where the problems start.
Point of information. Did you realize that I didn't ask Ms. Wilcox, I asked this county?
No, no, I did not while you're doing your head.
Now you do.
So my position is this, I don't think that she answers that question. I think it's answered among us, between our staff and whatever and what we do. And so, that's what I think. I'm glad that we went into the discussion item of it, didn't skip over. And so I'm gonna move that we adjourn this meeting, and that's my motion.
Second has been moved and supported, all in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.